Row call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Chaplain John Powers from Ohio Western University, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
We pause to pray for servant leadership, the grit and grace it takes to serve the whole and holy space we need to persevere as we confront the challenge and the chores of daily maintenance of city life amidst the strife and strain of broken lives that fester with the fears of drugs and guns. We also pause tonight to celebrate the gracious gift of life that was bestowed upon us all in this community, the hearty laugh and love and smiling face of Kevin Crowley. May he rest in peace and all the pieces of his gracious life be scattered still among our common wheel to heal and feed and nurture everyone whose life was touched by his abundant love. May we be worthy of his legacy. Shalom, salaam, shanti, shanti, amain.
I would like to take this to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Chaplain. Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held March 12th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed.
With approval.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Shaffer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Row call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And Kim, I want to thank you for filling in tonight for laying also.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask you to read the consent agenda, and I don't know how you got off so easy with just two, but...
Consent Agenda A, Resolution Number 18-19, a resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and/or committees, and specifying the term of the appointments. Consent Agenda B, Resolution Number 18-20, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a local public agency, LPA, agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the U.S. 23 micro-surfacing project, lane mile 11.43 to 12.68, to execute contracts and construct the project.
Thank you. This is the wish of council and the consent agenda. A move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shaffer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Row call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle? Yes. Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, and public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. If you'll come forward to the microphone and give us your name and address for the You can pull that microphone down too, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Roger Hallam, the Winter Street Inn, 185 West Winter Street, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. I would just like to raise the issue of bed and breakfast in this town. There were only two. One of them has recently gone out of business. Part of that is due to the Airbnb situation, which people are running basically unregulated businesses within the city. Being a qualified Airbnb, I lose my residential tax credit. I do an annual inspection with the fire department, which never turns out to be cheap. But it's a good thing. And I would just like to see if the city is willing to do anything about putting me on a level playing field with the Airbnbs. The other issue that I understand, there is a grand opening of an Airbnb on the east side, and following the agendas, I have not seen that on agenda for approval, and wondering if that's an Airbnb or how they're running that particular operation.
My understanding was the one on the east side, and I'd sent an email to Mr. Eflin last week about this, was a bed and breakfast. And my question was, you know, what process had they gone through? Regarding the Airbnb, a number of communities are dealing with that right now. We've got to figure out what, how we approach it in a way that's fair for everybody. But I, this came up at a conference I was at a couple of weeks ago, the city manager indicated that they were getting complaints from residents, not other owners of properties, but residents about just the goings-on in a particular rental. So, we've got to follow it up. I don't have a good answer for you.
Like I said, in a city like Delaware, it's a very difficult business to run. It's, we're obviously not a destination point, and I would just like to see if we can be on a level playing field with them.
Okay.
Any idea how many Airbnb's are in Delaware?
A bunch.
I have no idea.
Nope.
If you go on Airbnb.com, they don't give the addresses, but you'll recognize some of the houses.
Is that right?
And countywide, there's obviously more than in the city, but they're on the periphery of the city.
And I did not realize Seven Oaks was going to be an Airbnb. I thought it was just a bed and breakfast.
The one on the east side?
The one on the east side.
I, yeah, I'm not sure. I thought it was...
I just hadn't seen where it'd come before council.
Yeah.
Take a look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none tonight, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller? I have none, thank you. Mr. Browning?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Rohr?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Gosh, okay. Move on to item eight, which is consideration of ordinance 18-23. Layna, if you'll please, Kim, if you'll please read that to the record. I'm so sorry, Kim.
That's okay. Ordinance Number 18-23, an ordinance amending the Delaware Municipal Court and Clerk of Court employee benefits and leave policies.
Good evening, I'm Judge Mary Ann Hemmer, I'm here to address any concerns you have with the change that we made specifically to the head bailiff position. The reason we made the change is that we can secure the professionalism of formerly Lieutenant Ron Kuzma, who was then the head of security at OSU Marion. Because our bailiffs also work as security, we have had to revamp a lot of our policies. Mr. Kuzma comes in with tons of law enforcement experience, tons of management experience. He does teach the active shooter courses, which we have already been able to implement and train some of our bailiffs because we've had some issues this year. So, when we hired him, there were some negotiations, and that was one of the negotiations. We understand it is a break from the typical policy, but in order to get somebody of Mr. Kuzma's caliber, it was necessary. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
One thing I will add, what the pay plan will do for that particular position is nothing that the other pay plans do not have. The municipal court pay plan is unique among the other city pay plans in that it does not give prior service credit. So, by making this exception for that position, he will be in line with the rest of the city. So, you're not giving, you wouldn't be approving anything beyond what the city already does.
The difference is, it would be unlike the other bailiffs.
Correct. Right.
And that's, I think, the distinguish.
That's the distinguishing factor. And of course, as management, I'm well aware of some of the concerns that we have when running that sect of security/bailiffs for the court, but there's nobody else in the position like the head of the bailiffs, and there's nobody with near the qualifications and background that Lieutenant Kuzma brings to the table. I don't know, we probably aren't aware that we haven't updated our policies and procedures probably since like, I mean, it was on mimeograph, and he's already taken on that task. And I said, him coming in with not only the law enforcement experience, the courtroom experience, but also having that extra security experience for us on our bailiffs to both security and bailiffing, has already shown an improvement in the services that we have at the court.
Yeah, just at one point, they, back in 2010, before we had the last change, the, this benefit was the same as it was for the city. And the court had approached us at that time, indicating it was becoming, they had so many folks with prior service that that was a burden, and actually, council ended up changing it at that point, I think, and...
Right, I wasn't here for all that. I got to know the background. What it does is, when people leave, it causes large payouts. I mean, I was a benefit of that system at the county, it paid for a minivan. I understand it. When we negotiated with Lieutenant Kuzma, this is his third retirement, he's not going to be here 30 years. We did do some cost analysis, and at the end of the day, he's not going to be walking out when he retires with a $40,000 check because he's already in his, I don't want to get into his age, but he's just not in that situation. He's not in that part of his life. So, when it came down to hiring him, that was something he was adamant about because he wants to use vacation time that he's accrued over the 40 years of his service at every level of government. So, it became a negotiation because we don't pay a lot, and we did the cost analysis, and this actually put us ahead as far as what we save on his paycheck. Because if we were to hire him with what he was making at OSU, we couldn't afford him. It's that simple. So, yeah, we did do the analysis, he was an employee we desperately needed, we do need his services, we've already, you know, vamped up our security at the court, and again, we're asking our bailiffs to not only service bailiffs, but also court security. So, it's a very important position in the court, which is different than most courts. I mean, I will tell you, we have looked at other court systems where they do hire, you know, city police to come in, a deputy come in, or private security. And quite frankly, our cost savings with having the bailiffs do both is an incredible cost savings. So, when we look at the big picture, this was pennies.
Any questions?
I have a question, but I've known Ron for 20 years, and he's, he'll be a huge asset to the...
He's huge. He's already done some security analysis. I mean, we've had some issues, it's municipal court, you never know who's coming in on any given Monday morning. We've had issues that, not only security issues, but we've had people OD in the hallway. So, having somebody with his caliber there to train our officers, our bailiffs, and everybody that comes in has already shown itself and paid for itself, honestly. So, thank you for vouching for him. But he was a bailiff about 10 years ago, and then he went to be head of security at OSU Marion. And he wanted to retire, step down from that position, and he actually approached us. We had an opening, he's like, "I'm willing to take the pay cut, but I can't take the vacation cut." So...
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve or disapprove.
There you go. Thank you.
Shouldn't we take it to three readings if it's amending compensation?
At least two. I mean, you could consider two, it is compensation, it's the benefit plan. I don't think it's...
Is it time-sensitive?
No.
He's our area, isn't he?
Yeah, he's with you.
We've already hired him, this was just the following up with the benefits package that was negotiated, and he quite frankly knew, once we told him, "Look, we got to check with our lawyers because we have separate lawyers than Darren," and then check with Darren, he knows that this is in the works, and he actually hasn't said a word.
Okay, we'll take it to at least one more. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Number nine is consideration of Resolution 18-21. Kim, if you'll please read this to the record.
Resolution Number 18-21, a resolution authorizing the payment of tuition leave under the 2018 management pay plan.
Thank you, Mayor, mayors, council. Tonight, I'm going, we are asking you to take, to consider Resolution 18-21. We had a, we have an employee that, Janelle Vavinger, who is the GIS-CMMS Public Utilities Tech, and she was mistakenly told that she would be reimbursed for some classes that she would be taking, all pertaining to her position with the city. And it was, it was a system of failures, just not being able to double-check on things. It was, there was some transition going on in the Public Utilities Department. We understand the mistake that was made, and because, you know, we, if she would come forward to us now and ask if she could take these classes, it would be approved because it was, it is budgeted. So, we're just asking council's consideration to allow us to move forward and hold up our end of the bargain, so to speak, of, we told her mistakenly, staff told her mistakenly that she would be reimbursed these classes, we'd like to cap it at $3,500. So, what we've done is, we've accepted responsibility for this, this was a member of staff, you know, we dropped the ball on a few things, and we have shorted those processes now so that this will not happen again. And we're just asking council's consideration to approve the $3,500, pay, to pay her the $3,500 for some of the cost for classes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can possibly answer for you.
So, what we dropped the ball on is, was that she wasn't here long enough?
She wasn't here long enough.
One year?
Right, she was, that was the biggest error, she wasn't here long enough.
And then if she leaves within a certain amount of time, it has to be reimbursed?
She has to reimburse us. But I think it's five years.
Five years, okay.
But I can double-check on that for you, Mayor, and get back to you before the end of the meeting. I know it's in here, so...
So, is she done with school now?
No, she's in the process of getting her degree. And so, she was meant to take some additional classes, but when we realized the error, she put a hold of that, on that, until this is clear, is cleared. And then she will, like I said, we've modified the process so we won't have this issue again. We'll be doing some education of our department heads and supervisors so that they have a better understanding of what the new roles are, and she may very well apply in the future for additional reimbursement because, you know, this is something that benefits her and the city, and we definitely see the benefit of her taking these classes. And, you know, she's, obviously, it's in direct relationship to how she performs her work for us.
Any questions? Okay, take this on to another reading, or anybody else? Alrighty, item 10. I got my other screen, sorry. Kim, hold the lane again. Can you please read ordinance 18-18?
Sure. Ordinance Number 18-18, an ordinance amending Section 933.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Delaware, Ohio, regarding intoxicating beverages prohibited and repealing existing Section 933.01 in its entirety and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city by allowing the city to begin beer sales at the start of the golf season, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ted Miller is on vacation this week. Stacy Davenport is here, if council has any questions. But this is really, this is the third reading of the ordinance that would allow the sale of beer at Hidden Valley Golf Course. This was one of the recommendations of the Sustainability Working Group that looked at ways of improving the offerings at Hidden Valley Golf Course, and we're recommending your favorable action on that this evening. I know this is, this is the third reading, and I know there were some questions from the last, the last meeting. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the, about the ordinance.
Any questions by council?
I move for approval of ordinance Number 18-18.
Second.
Do you mean the ordinance clause? Sorry, I moved forward, well, let's see, hold on. Yeah, it's the third reading.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I move for the emergency clause, ordinance 18-18.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones, row call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller? Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Okay, move for the approval of 18-18.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones, any further discussion? Row call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, you could probably start.
Let's do financial report, because it's not 7:30 yet.
Seven minutes.
Don't you all start, Dean?
Yep, I can use all seven minutes then, right? It's more than I usually get, so... They included in the packet, a report through the end of February 2018, as indicated past year, still pretty early in the year to really draw any conclusions. Nothing of any substance jumped out at me in looking at where we stood year-to-date. I can't talk, say a whole lot more for seven minutes, but I would entertain any questions you may have related to the report.
Usually, we can't stop you. I'm sorry.
Just not much to talk about. I will indicate, we do have a note sale on Wednesday of this year, or this week, related to the Glen Road project. Again, we reissued notes for several years, and the roughly $10 million, we'll be taking bits on Wednesday.
Are rates up right now?
They're up compared to where they were in the past, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
Sure.
No questions, city? All right, let's do city manager's report.
Yeah, just a couple of items. One, regarding the work session from last Monday night, Sean and I had a chance, Sean Hughes and I had a chance to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the follow-up required, and I know council wants to have some follow-up in the discussion that we started last week about ways of improving our results regarding economic development. They're good, but obviously, it can always be better. One of the things we want to do is, because council indicated they wanted to hear more, want to get more updates about economic development projects, so we were planning at least once a month that Sean would report to you at a council meeting, maybe five minutes just on an update of what's going on, what are some of the more important projects that he's working on, so we're looking at that. We also want to get before you the Economic Development Incentive Plan, the EDIP, that we talked about. That will give council an opportunity to talk about the incentives, how they work. We wanted, that makes a lot of, a lot of sense. We are going to, I'm, we'll be following up with Dave regarding the comprehensive plan and the economic development chapter and how that's worked. A lot of what was discussed last week, it was in Vice Mayor Shaffer's email, or his listing of issues, is, some of that's going to be captured in the comprehensive plan update. So, that's an opportunity, I think, to address economic development in a, in a, in a more focused way. We are going to revise the fact sheets that we provide you for the projects that come before you for incentives, so that they're easier to understand in terms of number of jobs created, what the investment is going to be, what the clawback provisions are, if the incentives, if the business moves away or doesn't perform with what they have. So, we want to provide that to you, and we want to give you the monthly report in kind of the same template as we gave you that annual report. It's easier to read. We went back and looked at some of the monthly reports we provide to council, it's a lot of verbiage, but I think we want to just make it a little easier. And the form that we used for the annual report is what we're going to be following for that. So, I think that's going to be, that's going to be helpful. The other thing I see, I have just a couple of minutes left, is regarding recycling. We were notified by Sims Brothers Recycling that after the end of this year, they're no longer going to be in the recycling business, at least for residential recycling. It's very serious because our, we have a very, I think, good residential recycling program, curbside recycling program, and that's one of the services we provide, I think, works well. But right now, the market for recyclables is changing, and to the point where it's not as profitable as it is at once was. So, we're going to be following up with the City of Marion, they're in the same predicament we are because they provide residential recycling, and they use Sims Brothers as the entity that they provide the recyclables to. So, that's something that we'll be working with the City of Marion on. I also spoke with our Celtics District today to get their, their opinion on what's going on, and I can, I'll follow up with city council about that later. But that's something that we are going to have to keep an eye on and figure out a way to address. But what it does, it underscores the market, it also underscores that it's, it's something that the residents value, but there is a cost to this. And, and I know that it's something that, as I said, we've been doing it for a number of years. So, that's, that's really something important that we want to address. And we've got the Morcy Award that we're going to be getting next month for the Community Center and the National Guard Project, they'll be out there doing a video shoot of that this Wednesday, and hopefully, a number of you can come to the luncheon that we have for April. So, that can, I've got a couple of other things, but I know we've got a house that's getting a little more crowded, and I'll turn it back to the mayor.
When you said you reached out to Sol, is that DKMM?
Yes, I reached out, I talked to the mayor of Marion today, as well as the executive director of DKMM, about that issue, and they'd like to follow up and meet with us regarding what steps we need to take to preserve our programs.
Okay. Kim, if you will read item 11 and 12, which is ordinance Number 18-21 and 18-22. For those of you in the hallway, there are lots of seats inside, come on in. Kim, go ahead.
Ordinance Number 18-21, an ordinance for Medrock LLC, approving a zoning text amendment to the existing Willowbrook Farm tract PUD overlay zoning text planned unit development to allow a modification to the maximum dwelling units and density to multifamily areas 3 and 4 to allow additional dwelling units in Area 3 and removing units in Area 4, thereby decreasing the overall units currently allowed in total located on the east side of Howe Road on approximately 36 acres on property zone R6 multifamily with a PUD overlay. Ordinance Number 18-22, an ordinance for Medrock LLC, approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for multifamily Area 3 of the Willowbrook Farm tract for a 180-unit apartment complex on approximately 15.506 acres located on the northeast corner of Howe Road and DeGenova Way on property zone R6 PUD multifamily residential district with a planned unit development district.
Thank you. Mr. Eflin?
And Mayor, members of council, these cases are as read for a zoning text amendment to the existing PUD for Willowbrook Farms and a combined preliminary and final development plan. I'll take you through the cases now. So, this involved Willowbrook Farms is a lot of acres, and has many different components to it. The ones we're talking about tonight are Areas 3 and 4, appear on the screen, it's the south side of the Willowbrook Farms development. They were both zoned to allow for multiple family uses, and in different configurations, we'll get into that here in a second. Multifamily Area 3 is the subject of the combined development plan tonight, and is located along Howe Road just north of the Y, and that's what you see on the screen here. So, the comprehensive plan shows both areas as being medium density of multifamily. The comprehensive plan came after the zoning for this, and so it makes sense that the plan is in alignment with the zoning for this particular property as well. And here we have the zoning, both showing, both areas as R6 multifamily. Again, this is covered by planned unit development overlay and is governed by its own zoning text, which has unit caps and density caps among many other items for the entire planned unit development. So, I just want to show you the color rendering of the original PUD. This one's a little prettier, I guess, than the, than just a line drawing. I've changed directions on you, Howe Road is at the top of the screen, north is to the right then. And so, multifamily Area 3, I don't know if... And so multifamily area three, I don't know if the pointer will work on a white background, but multifamily area three is here, and multifamily area four is here in the bottom-left of your screen. But it does show the diversity of unit types and areas in the overall plan development. So we have this if we need to reference. So again, the current zoning by right in these two sub-areas that we're talking about, sub-area three and four, there are two hundred and ninety-five total dwelling units allowed by the PUD text today, a maximum of a hundred and forty units in area three and a hundred and fifty-five units in area four. So what the proposed text amendment is, is to amend both of those sub-areas. Amend sub-area three to allow a total of a hundred and eighty units, that's an additional forty units over what's allowed today, and amend area four to decrease the number of units by fifty-five to a total of one hundred units. Thereby making two hundred and eighty total dwelling units, or a reduction of about fifteen units over what is allowed in the two areas today. So we can focus in a little bit on sub-area three, the subject of the combined development plan in front of you. This is basically the area today. It is worth noting that area three in the original PUD text is noted as being a little bit over seventeen acres, included right-of-way for future Boulder Drive and that sort of thing. And so if we get into discussions about density, we'll, I'll be talking about gross density for these two issue, areas, should we get into those kinds of discussions as well. So the proposed site plan. The proposed plan shows a hundred and eighty units on sub-area three in this configuration, with a clubhouse, pool, several amenities, a pond, and a bocce ball court, electric car charging station, dog walk area in the center of the development, and basically rings of apartment buildings. I think the footprints here show you, give you a sense of how the buildings are broken up in terms of being articulated. And in your packet, we'll see later on, although it's kind of hard on the screen, every elevation is different, and every floor plan is a little different as a result, too. So there are twelve buildings shown on the site that are a combination of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, mostly two-bedroom units. There are three hundred and seventy-two parking spaces shown on the site, three hundred and sixty are required. So they are overparked, they have some visitor parking for the site. Some of the parking is in surface lots, as you could see, and some of the parking is in garage space as well. That appears at the ends of some of these units, and then as standalone garage spaces as well. So sort of a mixture in this case. You can see here, future Boulder Drive on the north, I should have started by orienting you, I'm sorry. Howe Road is on the left of the screen, future Boulder Drive, and the existing bit of Boulder Drive is on the, on the top part of the screen, and the lies on to the, to the bottom of the screen. The existing wooded preserve area is to the right of the screen, and you see a bit of the, of the edge of it on this color rendering. So we had some discussion and some revised recommendations coming at the last planning commission meeting, specifically related to Boulder Drive. And those recommendations, I believe, are carried through to your cases here tonight in a little different way that we could talk about. But the revised recommendation with respect to Boulder Drive was to recommend, city manager recommended that Boulder Drive be constructed for the piece of it that is not constructed today. And I'll try to illustrate, that's from about here at Howe Road to the edge of where Boulder is today. Obviously, the first phases of Adelaide Park to the north, or the, the top side of the screen here, are already constructed. And so this is the next and last piece adjacent to Boulder Drive. That's really the, the reason for that recommendation. So building rendering, this is a color rendering of unit B two on the northeast side. Again, I think this just serves to illustrate, though we wish every day we're blue skies. Despite the color of the sky, it serves to illustrate the articulation in these buildings, and really, the pitch roofs, the broken-up roof lines, which serves to break down the scale and size of what otherwise would be fairly large buildings. And as I said, these are very hard, so I'm just going to click through these. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to see them in your packet. We posted them online as well, for anybody that might want to take a look at them. But it basically just shows you that the front elevations, not just the front, but the elevations of all the buildings are indeed different. They include a significant percentage of natural materials and brick, primarily brick and stone, high-pitched roofs, and again, a change in the roof line to kind of break up the mass of that building. The floor plans, it's really very difficult to read on this, but again, get online. I'm sure council's looked in their packet, planning commission looked at all of these. But you get the sense of the mixture of the one and two-bedroom units. So back to the main rendering. And with that, what I would tell you is that your staff continues to recommend approval of the case as, cases, as presented to you with the revised recommendations coming out of the first planning commission meeting. I will tell you that the planning commission voted to not approve these cases to you tonight, which means that by charter, correct me if I'm wrong, but charter, it requires five affirmative votes of city council to overturn that recommendation of denial in these two cases. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay.
If you go back to, you know, what's the original area, units again, it went from like one forty to one eighty, and?
Sure. See if I can find that existed. This one, this one.
Go back one more, though.
So this is, this is today by right under the existing PUD text. Sub-area three can have up to a hundred and forty units, sub-area four can have up to a hundred and fifty-five units.
James, three one to one eighty?
So the proposal is, sub-area three goes to a hundred and eighty units, plus forty. And sub-area four goes down to a hundred units, minus fifty-five. Overall, between the two units, a reduction, a slight reduction of fifty.
I just want to try my notes, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave? Would the applicant like to come forward at this time? And as you gentlemen get seated, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
May I sit down, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Sit as you get seated.
Please, the council, my name is Jeff Lewis. My business address is sixteen fifty Lake Shore Drive, Columbus, four three two zero four. I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant. And before we begin, my poor wife, who has two daughters who are lawyers, and two sons who are starting law school this fall, so it's one versus five, but she has me conditioned to apologize in advance for anything offensive that I might say, or to, to kind of lay ground rules and tell you that I'm not here to try and embarrass anybody, or argue with anybody, or offend anybody. I'm here for two reasons. Number one is to represent my client the best way I know how. The second is to make my malpractice carrier happy, because if I forget to do some things, you can rest assured that I'll hear about it from both of those people in the aftermath. Having said that, I am a latecomer to the party. I've been, I've been retained after the planning commission meeting. And it seems to me that there is some misunderstanding, maybe among the public, about this particular project. And Councilman Jones asked an apt question, and that is, what's, what is my client allowed to do right now without any changes in the law? And I think you could see it up there, that Mr. Efflin correctly pointed out, he can stick a hundred or two hundred-some units in the, in here. And what he's asking to do is not only shift units, but reduce units. So the total density of this project will be decreased. Now, I've got a couple of housekeeping matters, and I had a case in Franklin County not too long ago, where our court system, and my apologies to Judge Hemmer, who I, she's still here, who I appear before from time to time. The judiciary kind of makes us lawyers do certain things that we maybe rather not do. But if we don't do them at the first instance, then I'm forever barred from asserting them at any future appeal in case that's the decision that you guys make and my client goes forward. So again, without offending anybody, a couple of housekeeping matters. Number one, I have to lodge an objection to the participation of any council member who has expressed an opinion on this case before the planning commission. I believe that the, and I've had some nice conversations with Darren about this, but I believe, it's my belief and my research shows me, leave it to some judge to tell me that I'm wrong, that there may be a constitutional issue under the Fourteenth Amendment, the due process clause, by sitting and having this application heard and debated by anybody who's already prejudged it on council. And again, it's not my intent to embarrass anybody or to make enemies here, but I have to lodge that objection, otherwise, I waive it. So having said that, I think the best thing for me to do here is to ask Mr. Horton here to introduce his guest and get with the technical stuff, because I'm pretty good at the law, but I'm not real good at, at architectural stuff and engineering. So with that. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. The last thing, I'm sorry, that I'd be remiss in doing, as I've determined that this is an administrative hearing, I'd respectfully request, Your Honor, to swear witnesses and to allow me to ask questions of other witnesses that may appear before here, so.
I will not ask, this is a public comment, I will not ask people to swear. I want people here to voice their opinion. After they've spoken, we'll take questions, and you can speak again afterwards.
Okay, thank you. And again, what the, the court's telling me, that I have to lodge an objection to the failure of my ability to cross-examine witnesses or to have sworn testimony. But I appreciate and respect your decision. Thank you.
And Your Honor, just jump in, I did speak to Attorney Lewis before, and he told me everything he was going to ask today, so he did not surprise us in any way. So I do appreciate the heads up on that, and everything he's done today, he's already told me he was going to request to do.
My name is Miles Horton, Director of Marketing and Public Relations for TNR Properties. Address fifteen twelve Glen Avenue, Columbus, four three two one two.
Randall Woodings, Principal, Contagionist Associates Architects Planners, four hundred South Fifth Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Essentially, Dave got us started unveiling all of the amenities, which we are wishing to offer at this property, as we're seeing residents asking for more and more out of their communities. This community will literally raise the bar of much of what is being put in the central Ohio area, as well as definitely in Delaware, and we're excited to be a part of that. This community will boast a large entertainment clubhouse with a fitness and wellness center, a sparkling resort-style swimming pool with multiple conversation areas, a community garden where residents can have their own little plot of land to attend to, if they have a green thumb, a dog park and a dog washing station that residents can enjoy their pets at, two bocce ball courts that, yes, are indeed still used, and electric car charging station for our green environment, as well as a twenty-four-seven package locker system that will allow our residents to be able to receive their packages conveniently. And we will also be integrating recycling, which is a hot topic right now, in our company's green initiative. So for many of these amenities, to be able to support such a long and hard, you know, set of amenities, we are asking for the minor modification to allow us to have more units to support such a high caliber of a community, as well as our construction. And we know that this is not of a higher density than what is going into this, this market and sub-markets. So we're excited for the opportunity to bring new residents and new community members to Delaware and offer them a place to call home, as we see more and more individuals electing to rent, as opposed to wishing to own. So that's my portion. Randall is here for architectural backup.
Can I ask him some questions to elucidate some of the things that he said? I'm going to hand you what's noted as a rezoning application planned unit development, development agreement for case PC ninety-nine, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Did you look at this document and attempt to make this development congruent with this document?
Yes, we did.
Could you tell the council in what ways, please?
Both TNR Properties, as well as working with zoning, it was of utmost importance for us to ensure that our zoning is with traffic patterns. And as stated in this document, the material right-of-ways, and that is exactly what we've done here, is we've shifted to where it makes sense for, for traffic and right-of-ways, and in keeping things in line with the natural flow of both of these mentioned parcels.
And I'm going to hand you also a, an agreement, a settlement agreement that was signed by Mr. Holman and the, my client in nineteen, I'm sorry, in twenty seventeen. And did you refer to this document as well in attempting to make the development congruent with this document? Particularly paragraph four?
Yes, as paragraph four states, the parties recognize that it may be necessary, from time to time, for Medrock to, for Medrock to make adjustments to the approved development plan as referenced in the Willowbrook Farm Tract planet, planned unit development, PUD, dated eight-three nineteen ninety-nine, which currently has a maximum of a hundred and fifty-five dwelling units in multifamily area four, and a hundred and forty dwelling units in multifamily area three. Medrock has indicated it wishes to decrease the number of units in one area, increase the number of units in a different area, as well as adjust the unit types in one area. This proposal will be pursued through the planning and development process in a normal course and under the standard city approval procedures for zoning amendment and development plan. The city administration and Medrock will work together towards approval of adjustments, provided the net units decrease in the number. In summary, we have done exactly what this action item number four has said. We've worked closely with the zoning department in ensuring full compliance with our proposal. We have taken all of their recommendations to heart and made said adjustments. And in summary, we are, as the very last statement said, decreasing the net density of the entire area as itself.
Thank you. And go ahead and reintroduce yourself, please, and kind of, if you would, let the council know what your role in all of this is.
Randall Allen Woodings, Principal, Contagionist Associates Architects Planners, Columbus, Ohio, four hundred South Fifth Street. We were the initial designers of the project. We were not involved in the nineteen ninety-nine zoning. However, we've done several projects for this company, and were approached last summer to begin this project, Willowbrook, with program requirements that were laid out by the company, by the PUD, by the zoning department, by the zoning caviates of Delaware. We laid the project out in terms of trying to promote good traffic flow, safety, and provide the owner with the desired product that he wanted at the end.
And did you refer to the city of Delaware's comprehensive plan in designing this to keep the denser uses for, for materials?
Yes.
And specifically, could you? And specifically, could you read the original development plan right here that's highlighted from the 1999 text?
"The development proposal utilizes classical traditional land planning, locating more intensive uses adjacent to the points of entry into the planned development with land use intensity decreasing as distance from the points of entry to the site and arterial rights void increases and buffering external impacting factors to progress from more intensive to less intensive use farther from the center's activity."
And that development plan was approved, your honor, by Delaware back in 1999?
Yes, to my knowledge.
And is that what you attempted to do by this plan?
Yes, that's what we did.
Could you point out specifically how you attempted to comply with that development plan?
Well, essentially what we did was we looked at what was left. This was a project that was already surrounded by existing roads or existing uses. The park was up, the two roads were in, Hock had been here a long time, the rights of way for the road had already been delineated by engineers. And so we thought, what was the best way that we could approach this project? And working with the City of Delaware, we thought that the best way to have our main entry was to be equidistant from both of the side roads that would be coming in. That gives traffic the best possible route to get into our project and the least amount of collision points. In terms of the secondary entrance from the very beginning, we knew that the single-family residents would not want us to have traffic coming off on their street, and so we decided, as one of the first decisions, to not have that entry at that part of the site. And so we put the entry towards the YMCA area. We felt that that would give us the safest, most consistent access and control of traffic close.
And with respect to the changes in the two densities of the relative parcels, how did you come about making that decision?
That decision was a program decision given to us by the client.
But it does comply with?
Yes.
The development, the original development plan?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or have my witnesses answer any questions, except if they could.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. I will tell you, when I open this public hearing, I want to hear from our constituents. I do not want you to cross-examine like you just did these gentlemen. That will deter anybody in this audience to come forward. I will write down their questions and we can answer them later, but this is not a courtroom. We are not going to cross-examine, as I just witnessed.
Your honor, with all due respect, the provides code section 25 of the sixth gives me that right, but I appreciate your room. Thank you.
Thank you. You may take your seats and we'll open this public hearing.
Again, I didn't mean to offend anybody by asking that. You seem offended, but that wasn't my intent. All I have to do is just try and do with the law, House. I'm sorry, I apologize again.
Well, I want to hear what these people have to say, and I do not want them to feel threatened in any way, shape, or form.
I certainly don't want to threaten anybody.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Scott Kinslow, Kingwell, if you come, thank you.
Your honor, before we start, I thought it might be helpful, I think part of what's going on here is, as you know, I've been corresponding with Mr. Lewis back and forth. I believe this is a legislative process where you're trying to decide if you want to make a legislative decision. Mr. Lewis believes it's an administrative process, which is more like a courtroom at that situation, appeal, so he's just trying to protect his record and defend his process and rights. We don't agree on the nature of it, but I understand his position, I respect that we just disagree, but that's why he is doing that, because he's trying to protect his record if he goes beyond his way, and obviously we're going the way we're going, but he's just doing what he wants.
And I'm protecting these people.
I understand, just wanted to explain a little bit because, you know, the lawyer's been having seats in the background, just wanted to explain a little bit about what's going on on that side of things.
Okay, that's fine.
I apologize for not being on it.
That's fine.
Hi, Scott Kinslow, 107 Diverston Way here in Delaware. I'll refer to the applicant as also the owner of the property who has hired the architect. Years ago, many years ago, the same applicant developed our neighborhood to the north of Boulder, specifically designated all of the homes along Boulder for reduced planting, fencing, storage sheds, indicating that we would have a second front yard. This plan does not give us the same consideration on the other side of the road, as the buildings were narrow, they're tall. Three of the four homes closest to these new apartments are single-story ranch homes, three out of four, all at about 25 feet tall to our peaks. The adjacent apartments will feel like towering at 35 feet. Again, that's only 10 feet, it's like a second, two-story house that's next to us. However, this is not a single home or single building that's next to us, this is the whole row, the whole development. The planned distance, I say planned for what's on the drawing, from the closest apartment building, this is the building, and the home at 211 Harmony Drive is 110 feet, building to building. A distance from, for space, the home plate is only 90 feet, so 20 feet more than that. Also, per the plan provided, the six-foot-tall mounding near Hock Road that runs along Boulder is reduced to about two feet along this, right across where the same home is. They've got indication in the paperwork that says that they will run five to six feet of mounding along with trees for screening along that whole route. As the pinch point comes down further and further, the mounding practically disappears as these buildings are, like I said, 110 feet apart. I measured them online using the tools on the county website, also the scales that were on the drawings provided. Going to Area 3 and 4, I'll try to keep this brief. The applicant is requesting Area 3 to be increased from 140 to 180 QR8 notice, reducing Area 4 to 100. During previous discussions about our density of the people and the vehicles in the immediate area of Houghton, Boulder, and Genova Way, the applicant has offered up on many occasions and has responded that these results are a net fewer units overall. Our response to this is that Area 3 traffic, which is the one that we're talking about closest with the apartments, the increase, is concentrated, the traffic is concentrated solely at Hock, Boulder, and DeGenova Way. The Area 4 traffic will be able to disperse along multiple routes, Boulder to the east, Boulder to the west, up Canal Street, up Harmony Street. So the bottom line is the net reduction of units really does not help us with the increase of units here at Area 3. I have a photo here, this was taken today. I'd like you to have this, I'd like you to put this in your record. You have a lot of photos and images of aerial views, top views, plan views. This is an actual photo that shows the entirety of the property. The print that I have here is 11B, or Building 11B. That's this top building here that you've already seen, it's already in your pocket. This top building, I'm going to rename it, I'm going to call it a mega building. So from the view of this photo, I want you to all please imagine, just for a moment, 12 large mega buildings, five additional five-car garages, an additional community building, two large legs, and what the applicant will call a resort-style pool. I have no clue what that is because it looks like a little square to me. Five or more enclosed dumpster areas, let's add 360-plus cars, trucks, vans, personal work vehicles, let's add 200 to 500 residents, daily service vehicles, mail, UPS, FedEx, refuse, recycling. Okay, I'm going to change the recipe a little bit, like we did this last week. Let's add howling wind and six inches of snow. I think jam packing all this into the smaller is very irresponsible. I'd like you to have these, if I can hand them to somebody.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Is there someone else that would like to come forward at this time? No one? Okay, then we will close the public hearing.
And we did talk about this earlier, Madam Mayor, we can close it for the purpose of moving on the agenda. We do, I did speak to Mr. Lewis earlier, he did request the opportunity to speak at the next meeting. I know he wants to address it as well, but I, we've done it.
He wanted to address the question that the gentleman asked about, the one thing he didn't understand. One of you want to come forward and answer that, that's fine.
No, your honor.
Come to the microphone, please.
Sure.
It's all recorded, thank you.
I understand. Just in case of malfunction, I brought my own. Your honor, I had a discussion with Mr. Schulman, and it's my understanding that we've agreed to keep the record open pending some further investigation by both me and the city as to certain legalities with respect to this, so that's, I just wanted to make sure that got on the record.
Yeah, that's, we did discuss earlier, and when I spoke to him right before the meeting, granted we got off the phone right beforehand, we have to close it just for the purpose of moving to the next agenda item.
To be reopened?
Yes.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't want you to, I don't say freak out, but I didn't want you to upset when we close it, but we just have to move on to the next item, we'll reopen it next week.
Thank you, and again, my apologies, I'm not here to try and offend anybody or intimidate anybody, I'm not sure where that came from, but I apologize if I have offended anybody, but thanks.
Thank you. Come in the back, raise your hand, yes.
Does that mean that further discussion will take place then for everybody, they thought it would be reopened?
Yes. Unless somebody wants to speak right now, tonight. No, they don't want to speak tonight.
This is the official public hearing, so if you're for sure wanting to say something, this would be the time to do it if you're all here.
All right, come on forward.
Very well might, but this would be a good opportunity.
Hi. Jamie Turinsky, I live at 313.
Talk to me in the microphone.
Sorry, 313 Johann, Heatherton.
And I didn't catch your name.
Jamie Turinsky.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody seems to be heard, just from the past discussions, and I don't know if those count in this meeting. I have questions about schooling. The school, the school system seems to be very overpacked in that area, especially with Schultz. What are they doing to address the overcrowding of the schools? You have all these two-bedroom apartments coming in. Well, there's probably going to be a lot of single-parent families in that situation, so what's gonna, what are they going to do at the schools? Then my other question is, what are they going to be doing with bike and walking trails? They're constantly used by the resurs, the little kids. Putting it across the street seems like a horrible idea, but I don't know what the actual plan is, so I would like to know how they're going to address the trails that everyone uses to walk over to the YMCA on a daily basis. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward?
Your honor, I could address the first question and they could address the second one if you would prefer that happen.
That's fine.
With respect to the school, again legally, at this point, my client is legally has the right to develop, Mr. Eflin, I'm sorry, I didn't total them up, how many units currently?
Four.
Okay, and so with respect to the school, actually, the plan here is a decrease in the units that are legally allowed, so that answers the first question. And the second question?
Piggybacking off of that, in regards to the school, our evaluations show that this development will be pumping in excess of $400,000 into the Delaware city school system, as well as with our demographic search on this area, we do not anticipate this community to have very many children. Thus, we feel that this would be a large chunk of change to put into the Delaware school system, and we are excited to reinvest in the community, and we want this schools to continue to grow and be a leader in the area.
Bike paths.
Yes, and as, I apologize that we've discussed in some of the prior hearings, we are working with zoning to ensure that we are, having the bike paths and trail systems will all be integrated into the area in a cohesive network, because we just as much as anyone wish for this to be part of the community, and the systems will all be interconnected, and we have discussed that with zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are, if one more, come on.
My name is Morgan Nicolai, 333 Braxton Street in the Heatherton community, which is located across the street from Hock, near the proposed development. I am new to the area, I have only lived here for one year, and we purposely chose this part of Delaware because we thought it was nice, we liked the housing developments, and we liked that we weren't near apartments, so I suppose it was poor planning on our part to not check into what was going to be developed in that area, so that was a lack of research on our end. However, I am concerned about the number of units that are going in, not only with the school district, but my kids take part in YMCA activities, and very difficult to find parking on the weekends when there are events already, and I feel like the lack of parking, because most families have more than one vehicle, it will overflow into the YMCA area. Not only that, I did have a question about the cost of the apartment complex, how much is it going to cost per unit monthly rate? You told us that it was a high-end apartment complex, so I'm just curious what high-end means in your definition. I did live in the Carson Farms complex, which is, seems to be similar to this. There were many, many families living in that complex, so I know there will be many families living in this complex as well, and I'm concerned about the economic status, I suppose, of who will be living in these apartments. We lived in the Carson Farms complex while our house was getting built, so I'm just a little bit nervous about the type of people will be living here in such a close proximity.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
My name is Todd Schuster, and I live at 700 Laner Woods in Heatherton. This past summer, we had a meeting in our park in the back of the neighborhood about schools with the school superintendent, and I have a daughter in second grade, and he told us that, point-blank, that the school Schultz is no longer able to be built onto. They've used all of their extra land, and also told us straight to her face that we would never need to build another school for at least 10 years till she graduated high school. And I, I don't know how now, what is it, seven months later, they want to build 180 more apartments? People that don't want to own homes, that have small kids, what, a half a mile from the school? I think the number was around, I forget, it was like, it's a 2,000 students per school, I want to say, is what they try not to get more than. It was very close, they were only like maybe 80 students away from being full capacity at Schultz already. And 180 more apartments, say, what, 20 to 30-year-olds with small kids, just in our neighborhood in the last three years that I've owned my house, I think we've added up just in the, say, 10 city blocks, that we've added like 90 new students just to Schultz, and you're probably going to add 100, 150 more, maybe? So I don't know. I mean, I just think we need more schools before we build more apartments and more homes, and the land should be used better, that's all.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
I was here for the first three meetings, my wife and I both, between, in front of the good people of the other board, and had good discussion, and it's just, we've heard so much on the first. board and had good discussion. And it's just, we've heard so much on the first meetings, it's just too many. If you drive down Houck Road, that entrance, there's a sharper bend and you realize they're coming out there. It's, it's gonna be very hard to see. But I have respect for the first board. I have respect for all you folks here in making a good decision. But what I've experienced here tonight with legal representation does not set well. It just seems like we're gonna have it one way or another. And I don't, I don't, that doesn't set well with me. It doesn't feel good. You know, I respect you folks to make a good decision. I think with the community's help, we'll come to a good decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Miles, do you want to address any of these questions about?
Rent.
The rent? Do you want to, I know you have the four, but would you like to address them again? You addressed them at the other meeting, I'm sorry.
Again, I apologize. In the first couple hearings, we did discuss our rents and our price point. So we have primarily, we do have four styles of apartment homes. There's some delineation and differences in that with the attached or detached garages, but primarily to just keep it easy. It's four styles. We have a one-bedroom large, one-bedroom small, and two-bedroom small, two-bedroom large. Our small one-bedrooms are going to be around 780 square feet and those will be starting at around $975 a month. The large one-bedrooms will be around 825 square feet and those will be around $1,000. And the small two-bedrooms will be around 1,100 square feet and those will be at 1,200. And the large two-bedrooms will be around 1,200 square feet and around $1,300. So that's the price point of our anticipated rents for this community. So that is what we believe we will be getting, which is in line with the Delaware market. And we believe that it's fair. In terms of the question in regards to the parking, again, we're allotting for 2.5 spots for our parking and adding additional parking in our plan. So we do not foresee there being any issues with parking as we have gone above and beyond what is asked of us and what is required by code with, with the city.
Would you suspect that somebody who's gonna use the Y from one of these apartments would drive the car three blocks to the, two blocks to the Y?
I can't postulate on everyone. I think that that would be a, it would depend on, I would agree with the weather. But hopefully, we would have more sunny days than not, but this is Columbus, Ohio. So realistically, I think that it would, it would depend on the day and how Columbus is feeling. But our intent would be that part of restructuring this is that they would be close to some of the resources around, surrounding them.
Thank you. I think you've answered the, or you commented on the schools. We cannot comment on the type of people, obviously.
Correct.
And the traffic, we've talked about. I know, I've heard from several people how busy that road already is. We've heard from Bill that says it can handle it. It doesn't warn a light at this point. I've heard about trying to turn left and right out of the other developments. They're telling me this is gonna be a lot better. I'm relying on you. Give me some positive feedback here, buddy.
We're gonna, you know, we understand that issues down in Diverston Way, Cobblestone. One very specific thing in the engineering upfront was to make sure that we don't have any type of repeats of sight distance issues. At the main entrance, we have a house drive. In other words, you have plenty of sight distance to the north and the south to see those cars coming before you, as you're making your decision whether or not to pull out, you know whether or not there's a vehicle on your path. It is a three-lane section, dedicated turn lanes. So don't be interference or congestion going northbound or southbound making those turns.
Alrighty, I think we've.
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Okay.
When Miles was here, you, you mentioned earlier, I just made note of it, about you did a study about expecting a lot of children. Where do you get that?
In terms of the, the submarket, we, we looked at what, who is renting, you know, the demographic of that. And in, in that, this submarket has a lower proportion of, you know, children already there. And we would expect that our community would be in line with, with what the demographic is currently showing. So.
You said that you're not expecting a lot of kids. I'm just asking how you came to that conclusion. I guess in dummy terms for me.
Yeah, first and foremost, that would primarily be with the, roughly 40% of that being one-bedrooms as required by law. There, there's a certain amount of occupants. So that's going to, right there, limit the, the amount. And, and just in the way that the community is, is set up, we're, we're just not foreseeing this to be a, a large family with only two bedrooms. Some of the communities that people have mentioned in this hearing and others have three bedrooms and larger style floor plans. These are pretty limited with, with the two. So just being in line with what those floor plans typically, the type of residents that those have. You know, we're, we're just making a guess. Is it a definitive no? But with our research, you know, that's where we're being led to believe.
The only reason I bring this up is as a recently new single parents, I have a two-bedroom apartment.
Yes.
Smaller than that and the rents are pretty much the same as, you know, those are much higher rents than what I'm paying. And it's a plethora of kids. I think you're really underestimating the amount of children that's gonna come into that.
Then we, I mean.
That's why, that's why I was just.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, in, if such is the case, again, I, I believe that with that $400,000 a year, the city's gonna be, specifically that the school system will be receiving, then that would be a good time to evaluate further needs to continue to have the school district, you know, remain to be a leader in our area. Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I might, and again, I, there was a comment about, hey, it looks like this is gonna happen come heck or high water. And, and I just want to focus to understand that this isn't a question, this isn't an initial rezoning. This has been approved for more units than what we're asking for. And again, I don't know, there was a previous council and this happened in 1999 and property owners get vested rights. And I don't want people to think, oh, we're gonna jam this down somebody's throat. This, there was an application made in 1999 that allowed this many units. And it's, it's not, it's not a, a question of jamming it down somebody's throat. It's a question of this is a legal appropriate use for this particular piece of land. We're actually asking for a decrease overall. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Was there a case in 99 that we're not aware of that approved 180 units?
Councilman Keller, I think what he's referring to is the, he's referring to the overall density. If nothing happened today, I think Mr. Lewis and I would both agree, they have the right to build 140 on this section and 155 on the other section. The question is whether they can reallocate the densities. But that, it is already approved for multifamily. It's already approved for the 140. So, you know, they came back and said we want 140. You couldn't realistically say no to that. But I think that's what, when he talks about approval of the numbers, he's talking about both sections.
Okay, I was confused. Okay. All right, at this time, we will close the public. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were done. You were this close.
I've come to every meeting and all that stuff. Dr. E, you know my name and everything?
No.
You're Todd? Todd Schuster, 700 Laner Woods Boulevard. So I've owned my own barber shop in Hilliard for almost 18 years. And I watched Hilliard do what Delaware's about to do. And I, I just, I don't get how you can say in 1999, there was something passed, when in 1999, I don't think anything was built on Houck Road, except the warehouses down by, is it Airport Road, Pittsburgh Road? Can't get the name of it. I mean, it's just, and then, and then I'm glad that you brought up the kid thing. Because I, it's not a joke, the school superintendent, and I hate to say that he didn't, he wasn't honest with us, but when I asked him a direct question about how many more kids could be available in Schultz, he said, as many as possible for the next decade. I don't believe it. And I'm glad, again, you said this about these apartments. One and two and three-bedroom apartments are gonna have tons of kids. I see it in Hilliard. I have for 18 years. Hilliard was the fastest growing city in the state of Ohio. Now Delaware is the next fastest growing city. And I just want people to do it the right way. I watched them get lied to in the city of Hilliard every time something wanted passed about apartments are cheaper or it's for millennials. It's what they're saying now. All they're building in Hilliard right now are LC communities, one and two and three-bedroom, two, three-story condos. Because they say young people don't want to own houses. At your guys' prices, it's almost what I pay in my house at 3, 200 square feet. $1,900 and $18 a month is what I pay on my mortgage. Your biggest apartment, you said, is almost $1,300. And it's a third of the size of my house. I don't believe that these young professionals don't want to own houses because I own a business dealing with young professionals every day and they do want to own houses. That's all. Sorry. I'm done.
That's right. Well, there was a plan in 1999, correct, Dave? You weren't even here then, but it was approved back in 1999. Yeah. So, all right, I'm gonna close the public here. Did your hand really just go up? Come on. Okay, sure. Okay.
I'm Deb Logan. I live at 102 Diverston Way. And I want to comment on the plan because one of the things that was said today that kind of contradicted something that I felt had been previously said. One of the things that had been said earlier, my understanding from the representatives, was that this was to be a community for the people in that community and that it's private space. And today, they talked about with the bike paths and so on, it being open to the, you know, wanting to keep things open and so on. That brings me to a concern. There's a beautiful little wetlands, a bird watching area that's on the one side of the community. And one of the things, if they're truly wanting to keep this private, we've got this beautiful nature area. And in a previous hearing, they said that they wanted to keep that open. If the rest of the public is to stay out of this area, then does there need to be some kind of delineation between the, the apartment complex and the, and the wetlands area? I'm really concerned about this beautiful little nature thing, if it becomes part of the backyard of a very dense apartment complex.
Dave, can you show me where the wetlands that she's referring to?
You're referring to the woods, the existing wooded area?
No, I'm talking about.
I'm talking about the pond that's in the corner.
Right. On the right of the red, the line.
The right of the line.
Yeah, the right.
So that's the, that's the wooded preserve that went with the YMCA.
Yeah, that, yeah, right. Yeah, it's also a nature area. There's a walking trail back there.
A beautiful place to wa, look for, watch birds and so on.
It's intended for that, sure.
And, and they've made it very clear that the community, this is to be a very, a private area, that it's not to be open to the community. And yet tonight, they were saying they wanted to be integrated into the community. And they said that, you know, the subject was brought up, would there be a fence along that line? And they said, no, they want that to be open. It's either a private area or it's an open area. So, you know, if you're in the nature area, how do you know where their area starts and, and the apartment area starts and the nature area ends? And I'm afraid that it will become, what words are going to be, want to be in an area that has that density? I, I do have a concern about that. I think one of the things that a, a lot of us have talked about why we chose to live in Delaware was the nature of Delaware. We could live closer to Delaware, or to Columbus, in the rabbit warrants, with the apartment buildings and so on. We chose to live in an area with places like that. So.
Did you respond to?
Just real quick, I think she's referencing some of the conversation we had in a planning commission with respect to the, the eastern border of this project, the western border of our reserve. And the idea, and it's a little easier to see here, the idea was that there wouldn't be a fence unless you require it along that border for this development. In fact, you can see in the lower right of this diagram, a connection from this development into the walking path. We have walking path trails in the wood, in our wooded area. And there would be a connection to allow these residents to access that citywide amenity that anybody can access right now. But really to maintain that wooded, buffered area. If you want to, you certainly could require some sort of fence or delineation there. But I think our, I'm not sure it's, not sure it shows up so well here with all the trees being in leaf, but there's a pretty heavy wooded line there between this development and the nearest walking path, except for where they're making that connection. Just want to, I, I think that was a part of the conversation that we had.
Okay. All right, now I'm gonna close the public hearing. I bet you raised your hand.
Oh, yeah. Like a notch in when you bid.
Okay, so this is gonna come back to the next council meeting, which is April 9th. April 9th. So, and I'm sure you'll welcome again, and I'm sure I'll listen to some new ideas or, and I'm sure the applicants will probably want to speak again also. And I will let people speak again. Okay, moving on. Let's go to item 13, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-24.
Ordinance number 18-24, an ordinance granting an appeal of a denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the request by Bunz Restaurant LLC for reinstating storefront entrances at 49 North Sandusky Street, which is zone B2, Central Business District and located in the downtown core sub-district of the downtown historic district overlay.
Ms. Eflin, if you want to wait a minute till room clears.
I'm behind too.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an appeal of a denial of a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. We don't have these very often, but they do happen from time to time. The applicants have the right within 30 days to express their desire for an appeal to city council of Historic Preservation Commission decisions. In the cases of COAs, that was expressed by Vassilia in this case. We found the next available council meeting, which happened to be this one, to place this before you. And the other thing I should note for you is that it takes a simple majority vote of council to overturn the denial of HPC. That makes sense? Simple, simple majority vote to overturn the denial. So, or you could vote to deny it yourself. So let me walk you through this quickly. The property is located at 49 North Sandusky Street. It is in the B2 Commercial District. It is in the downtown core sub-area of the historic district overlay. Real photograph showing the roof of the building. It's number 49, so it's in the middle of this picture, in the middle of this block that we're looking at. And this, we have some photographic evidence. Obviously, we never have as much as we like in these cases, but we're actually pretty blessed in the community. We have a wealth of photographs and have it fairly well organized in our own files, but also from the Delaware County Historical Society. It's quite an archive. in our own files, but also from the Delaware County Historical Society, it's quite an archive. So this picture is the oldest one that we can find, and it shows you more of that historic storefront look to the building, with a ground floor entrance kind of in the middle to the retail portion of the establishment, and an open staircase that led up to the second and third floor. Not, didn't happen all the time, but not terribly unusual. You could see one there on the Boston store as well, in terms of an open staircase, just the way it was done. The other thing that you can see a little bit in this photograph, probably better on your computers, is the detail of the first floor, and the columns, the headers, et cetera, the, the quality of workmanship that was put into this building originally. So I'm going to move on to this photograph, which shows you again, the, the air quotes here, the original building, or as close as we can figure, on the left. 1952, a change in addition, shown as the words are Singer Building, if you will. That replaced that historic storefront, removed a lot of the, those elements I was talking to you about in the details, and replaced the front door with a double, best we can figure aluminum door system. And here on the right, you have a 1999 adaptation, sometime in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, the door, the double doors became a single door on the right side. And so that's where we sit today, with a lot of those details and elements, unfortunately haven't been removed through the years. And so, this, this is the front of the building as it says today, it's the door on the right side. And the reason why we have the header reinstated interior stair and landing, I'm just going to get up and, because the pointer doesn't work too well. But what happens, what has happened is that these stairs were removed at a point in time, and so everyone comes through the door and into the retail space. The advocate wishes to re-energize the upper story spaces, which is a good thing. And so the first part of that was to reestablish the stairs on the interior, where they were leading up to the upper story apartments, and you see them starting to be constructed here. That leaves the ground floor retail space, to have to share this entranceway and then go left into the retail space, or go up into the, what presumably would be likely residential space, up above. What the applicant would like to do is install the same type of door that's there now, clearly not the original historic door, but the door, at least to mimic the 19, circa 1950s to 1970s door, which is, could be arguably, unfortunately, in my opinion, historic itself, but just different time in history. But what the applicant would like to do is basically cut back that piece of angled storefront glass, and make it more perpendicular to Sandusky Street, if you will, and put in a door that's similar to the one that's there now, thereby separating the entrances to the upper story units and to the retail space. The applicant was asked by HPC and by us, before the case went to HPC, if he would be interested in doing more of a full facade rehab to more of that original historic look of the storefront. And the indication was that just the economy for him on this building just didn't make that possible at this time. And so that was part of the information that we were working off of. I direct you to some of the information, I think easily found in the fact sheet, probably more than anything for you, with regard to your requirements in this appeal. As HPC didn't find that this was in keeping with the guidelines, and didn't find that it had met the tests for substantial economic hardship or an unusual compelling circumstance, that's given in section 1190.06D, again, contained in your fact sheet. Those are really your decision criteria. And that's why I did more of a full presentation here to you. You can certainly go on the record of HPC, the chairman is here tonight, there's another member here tonight. I have my staff member, Diane Gunther, in, in the back, if we have any technical questions from that meeting. But you really have to relook at this case, decide whether it meets the design guidelines or not. If it does, then presumably you would overturn the denial. If it doesn't, you may find that the economic hardship or unusual compelling circumstances are in play here, and you really only need to meet one of these subtests. So if you, if you find that it meets 1A, 1, 2, or 3, or 2, 1, 2, or 3, that would be enough to overturn the denial. Again, each individual of you has to wrestle with the case, with the decision criteria, and then obviously you have to do it collectively to make a decision of this appeal. Staff does rec, we did recommend approval to HPC, continue to recommend approval to you. All your ordinances are always written in the affirmative, which makes writing a denial in the affirmative kind of difficult, but that's the reason why your ordinances read that way. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Madam Mayor, procedurally, well, I just thought it might be helpful, because we don't get very many of these. In contrast to the last case, which was your legislative decision whether you want to approve a zoning density change, this is actually an appeal where HPC could have granted it, they did not, now it appeals to you. So you're acting more in that quasi judicial realm as before, you're, I believe, in my opinion, you're acting legislative realm. So that's kind of why votes are a little different, and why, you know, the ordinance is a little different, but you actually are hearing this as an appellate body.
Just want to be clear for you that, a little bit unlike BZI, I know some of you have sat on that, where you might just be looking at process in that case, sometimes substance in terms of a variance or something like that. You can look at both of those items in this case, process, or really re-adjudicate the case, given the decision criteria in front of it. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes. Just so I understand, so a, a approval, a, a vote in favor, a yes vote, is to appeal the original denial?
A yes vote, Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, but a yes vote on ordinance 1824 would approve the appeal of the denial, thereby approving what he wants to do.
Yes equals two doors, no equals no two doors.
There you go. Boiled down for you. There's only a lawyer.
I hear and I try to adapt.
Any questions for Dave? Would the applicant like to come forward this time? And if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Vasili Konstantinidis, 14 West Winter, Delaware, Ohio, owner Buns.
Anything you would like to add?
Well, you know, I gave a lot of thought. I really don't, it was just a small project, and I wanted to expose the second floor. Because in the first place, I still question, why did they take it away? But it happened downtown those days, that's why they done, they concentrate on the first floor, and not in the second or third floor. But I think, you know, the growth in this community is tremendous, and I think that the downtown needs to have the, you know, the residents and people should live downtown. And I took the advice of my friends and contractors, and I said, well, let's just do it. I already have plans to put the second floor. But after, you know, they installed the stairway, they, we realized it's going to be extremely difficult to do construction on the second floor. And you know, while I have a new tenant there, and they're saying, well, you know, I mean, how are they going to have to serve the same way? So it was just a difficult decision. So I decided to go ahead and appeal the case, because I think it's important for me to move on to this project. If not, I'll just go on the way it is, but it doesn't make sense to use the same door when I have construction. I'm trying to, you know, put two, three apartments, two apartments I want to put up there. And then, you know, it's going to be convenient, I wanted to have a second door to get into the, so it doesn't disturb the other tenant, the new tenant, whoever is going to be over there. That's all I have.
Okay. So when, when you were asked to take it back to 1850, did you get any kind of numbers as to what it would cost to versus just changing the glass and adding the door?
I, I never got any, no, I have not. Because I look into it, you know, the, a lot of wooden doors, you know, downtown, I have wooden doors too, and they swell in the winter time, and they're not practical for the people, you know, who own businesses, they don't close. I mean, 2W, and, you know, my building doesn't close in the winter time, but it closes summer time, because they swell from the moisture and everything else. For safety point, they all advised me, just put a door now, and, you know, that's, that's why I'm here. But I don't have any numbers to give you. I don't, I pay as I go.
Very good. Any other questions for Vasili? All right. What we thinking?
Madam Mayor, I moved to approve ordinance 1624, which would be affirmative to appeal the denial.
Second. To grant the appeal, right?
May I ask for a little further discussion?
Sure.
Just a summary of why this was denied, or there was?
Well, we have somebody from HPC, he could come forward at this time, if that's what you want to hear. Roger, would you like to come forward?
I didn't prepare any comments, but I'd be happy to answer questions if counsel has any.
Well, you have, touching on what Dave said, there's, there's two questions, and I did watch, I was not at the meeting, but I did watch the video of the meeting. Does this meet the design criterion of HPC? And I think, I don't see how we can answer that question, yes. Would you agree with that, or?
This does not meet the design standards for the architectural standards, which is the primary function of the Historic Preservation Commission, is to administer and enforce the architectural standards for the Historic District.
So did the, did the commission consider then the second question, which, which is, does this meet one of the criterion, criteria, I'm sorry, six criteria for a variance, if you will?
We didn't feel it did. I, I can't speak for the entire commission, but the vote was five to one against it. This application is to use materials identical to the 1960s storefront, which we're trying to one by one eliminate from the Historic District, and the primary opportunity that we have to decrease the impact of the 1960s and 70s on our buildings that are now in our Historic District, is when somebody comes forward and wants to modify the exterior of a storefront. This is similar to a number of other projects that have already been through the HPC downtown, and all of those other projects have found a way to comply with using materials that comply with the architectural standards and look more fitting than mill finish, all glass, 1960s storefront door. This is, this is one of probably a dozen of these projects that have been completed downtown, and all the others have complied with the architectural standards, and I think the commission didn't feel that there was undue hardship here. He's probably going to spend a significant portion of what it would cost to redo the entire storefront in appropriate materials, just to add the extra non-compliant door. We didn't feel it justified the undue hardship.
So if the door was glass, it would be compliant, but aluminum is not, is that?
No, the, the, the architectural standards have a percentage of glass and solid materials, presumably wood, that are required for doors to be used as storefront doors in the Historic District. So, David, would, could you articulate that in a little more efficient manner?
No, I think that is a standard for, there's a, there's a minimum and maximum amount of glass. You can think of it as, I usually describe it as, you know, the kick plates on the bottom of the door, that sort of look, but it's more than that too. It's the materials that are used to create the door, which are typically, if we're going back to more of the original, air quotes, original Historic District, would be wood, or could be an aluminum clad wood, or even in some cases aluminum storefronts, but that they have sort of the non-mill finished, the non-shiny metal look of the aluminum door. In this case, if you're not redoing the entire storefront, however, you'd have maybe two compliant looking doors, and the rest of the storefront that still looks like the 60s, in staff's opinion. And I'm not sure, we, we would have moved the doors closer to compliant, but not the rest of it closer to compliant. I'm not sure how that would necessarily look altogether like that. And so the basis of our recommendation was that we, we could find this as more of a minor adaptation, and being minor, though certainly not, you know, what I think even Vasili would want to do. I think he would want to do a full storefront rehab, at least I'm talking to him. And that's what we would all want. But it's just, this doesn't preclude him from doing that in the future either, which was part of our analysis. Whereas if we had him put more money into even a portion of the storefront, he may come back, say, we made me put a lot more money in a portion of the storefront, now I don't have any more to do, or I don't want to change the storefront in the future. So that was a basis of our analysis, but it's a, it's a tricky case, in this case. It's not whole front, and it's not a, it's not a portion of the front, this would be a couple of changes. So you have some things to talk about.
Dave, I usually don't assert myself, but because we don't do appeals, I do have a question for you, maybe to HPC. Is the objection that two door alignment, or is the objection at the lower level just the style of materials of the door?
I think more the latter.
Is that fair?
The objection is that granting this request would have perpetuated the 1950s or 60s all glass aluminum storefront appearance, and that's not compliant with the architectural standards that we're in business to enforce. The, the standard for any door currently that is to be replaced or rebuilt on, in the, in the Historic District, is somewhere between 50 and 75% glass, and these are like 98% glass.
Would it make a difference, Roger, if they had the volume of, it was less, in terms of these two particular doors?
I don't understand.
In terms of less glass? You mentioned it's 95%. Would it matter?
Door was wood with a smaller glass.
Yeah, right. That make any difference? I know it's not totally the redoing the whole front, but would that, we address some of your?
One of the issues that HPC has is that we, and, and any zoning, basically, we can't make anybody change an existing condition.
Right.
The only opportunity we have to make the architectural standards that we've had guiding our development downtown for about 20 years, the only opportunity we have to enforce those is when somebody wants to alter an existing storefront. And we didn't feel that the two all glass aluminum 1960s doors did anything to enhance the Historic District.
The cases you talked about before, that the, were those cases where they applied, it was denied, and then they appealed? Or did they just change the way they did it to conform with the architectural standards? The other, the other businesses you're talking about that you've dealt with over the years?
Well, there's, there's, there's probably somewhere between half a dozen and a dozen similar situations. What happened, obviously, in the 50s or the 60s, sometime in the post-war history of our downtown, is that the upper floors became useless. Nobody wanted to rent them. And so a lot of the stairways were torn out, and the storefronts were changed to accommodate that in various ways. Now, thanks to, in part to what the architectural standards in the Historic District have encouraged, is all of a sudden, people want to live downtown. Vasili is putting in an apartment where there used to be one, he's putting in two where there probably used to be two, and this is a good thing. DHPC just did not feel that perpetuating the 1950s all, all glass aluminum door and storefront was the way to do it. If there's a compromise so that we could replace both the doors, I mean, I'm not, I'm not authorized to speak for the entire HPC, and I wouldn't think of doing that, but from my point of view, if, if he, if Vasili amended the, the application to put two matching compliant doors there... doors there and altered the rest of the storefront in, maybe by painting the aluminum to look a little less nineteen fifty's and trimming out the rest of the storefront, I suspect that the HPC would, would look favorably upon that.
I think, Madam Mayor, members of council, just to answer your question from my perspective, one of the, I don't disagree with anything Roger just said, but I would say that one of the differences in this case to the ones at least that I've been party to since I've been here is that this involves putting one door back in, it didn't involve the entire storefront, and that, that's, I can't think of one door replacement like, they occur often with part of a bigger rehab, and we do talk about doors and windows, of course, in those conditions. So that may be just one bit of distinction between this one and others, but I agree with Roger, it's obviously you can't, there's existing conditions, and then when someone comes to change something, that's the moment when you have to talk about the design guidelines and how it might apply to a building. I think his solution, there is a simple solution in talking to Jerry to make the aluminum's bare metal sort of fade a little bit more into the background by painting it. Could be a brown or bronze or something, you know, neutral. There isn't much of it, it's mostly glass in the front. And you could do the same thing with the door surrounds in this case, or you could have wood or some sort of storefront door. Presumably, if this was a full rehab, I think HPC would look at it maybe a little differently, in my opinion. If the entire storefront came forward, was brought back out to the sidewalk, and you put in what we call storefront system, which is typically made out of aluminum, but it gives you that look back. That's not the case here. He's just looking to do one door and separate the entrances. So just a point of distinction.
Okay. Any other questions for Roger or Vasili?
Just Roger, real quickly, so what do two compliant doors look like in your opinion? What do two compliant doors look like in your opinion?
I would say two compliant doors with, that complies with the architectural standards would be two wood doors that had somewhere between fifty percent and seventy-five percent glass area.
Okay. It would, obviously, as opposed to, okay.
Which is pretty much what, what you see all around the rest of the downtown.
I'd be interested to know what the other, you know, this is kind of Cease's question, but what the other commission members, how they would answer that question now. I, I know Roger knows this stuff, he's a former architect, you know?
Right, right.
I think, I think that question could get answered five different ways.
You know, I walked down Winter Street the other day, and I could not believe how many aluminum doors there were. I think I saw two wood. And then I look at the antique store, they're here right now, yours are aluminum. I mean, there is a lot of aluminum doors downtown. I appreciate Vasili wanting to add apartments to bring more people downtown. I really appreciate that. To make him do a full change over this, I'm not fair for that.
That was my question, Roger. You're not just asking for those doors to be, to take your stand, you're asking for the front of the store to be changed in the process, is that right?
Well, that's what everyone else has done that has faced this problem. If there's a compromise that can be reached to make it look less like a nineteen fifty's storefront and more compliant with the architectural standards, I think HPC would be interested in hearing that.
I do have one more question for Dave, and HPC can jump in as well. We talked about how we can't make somebody change an existing door, but you can make someone change another door. And I know, Dave, you talked about how you didn't really necessarily agree that it was a good idea to have two different doors, but if he came in with a compliant door on the new door, does that meet the standards because we can't force them to do the other door, even though it might not be ideal that they didn't match?
I thought we were having a cross-examination.
No, I'm not cross-exam... I'm sorry, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to figure out, because I feel...
I couldn't resist that one.
I've heard everyone say like...
Especially by my own lawyer.
No, just, everyone's been saying, well, is there a compromise, is there a way to make this work? I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm going to the judge, whatever. That was fair.
You're all right.
From my perspective with staff, I think it, it would look awfully odd to have one compliant door and the rest, so let's call it ten percent of the storefront compliant and ninety percent of it non-compliant to the, to the error that's probably, I think in most people's eyes, once we do a full rehab, the error that's mostly, that's most egregious visually and aesthetically to most people's minds. If you have it and you make it work, that's fine, you can obviously continue to use that. But to me, if you're going to do one door, you ought to at least do the two doors and maybe have the aluminum just be painted, if that's what you want to do. A third option that I hadn't considered, Darren, and now I'm going to cross-examine you a little bit, is could they, could they remand this back to HPC as well for further consideration? Not that that takes more time for everybody. Okay, they're saying no, so forget the question.
Well, I will, I'll answer your question, but I will answer your question. The only thing I was thinking was, you call it remand, that's very formal. If council could vote more time, but if they're like, hey, maybe there's a way we can work this out, they could always not make a decision tonight, see if we can work something out, and then come back.
I think there was a consensus no.
But that, that seems to be squash, so that's totally up to council.
Okay, Sherry Rivera is in the back. She was, she also sits on HPC. Would you like to add anything at all? If you do, you have to come with a microphone now. So let's let her sit down for just a second, just, just to get her perspective. Vasili, you don't have to leave, you're fine.
I was the yes vote. To me, I agree with most of what Mr. Efflin said. It seemed very minor to me. It doesn't look bad. It looks like a lot of the downtown. I just don't think that most people driving past would even notice that there was a new It just seemed, I don't like when you get an opportunity to, when somebody comes in and wants to do something and you want them to do a big something, I like to keep it to exactly what they are asking for. So I agreed with you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Back to council. Unless you have any more questions?
Motion for.
Okay, so I have a motion. Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Hellinger. I'm not going to ask any more questions. Go call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rur?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes. I'm just curious.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. Thank you for investing in downtown, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. City manager, are you done?
Yes. One thing, we did have a severe water main break on King Avenue.
You have two.
Actually, one on Lincoln. The one on King severely damaged that road, so that will be something we'll be following up with council on it, just to make you aware of it.
Mrs. Walker?
Thank you. In lieu of Elaine McCloskey not being here tonight, she will may make the following announcements. It's a Main Street update. April sixth, first Friday, will be Spring On Down to play Springer, which is similar to Bingo for Main Street, and there will be no closing on that day. April twenty-eighth is the Main Street Celebrate Earth Day by volunteering to clean up your block, God bless you, and help tidy up the downtown from ten to twelve. Main Street closures begin the May fourth, putter around the downtown featuring Walk Mile in Our Shoes, complete with a miniature golf course all around the downtown. And then May twenty-sixth, everyone's favorite time, Farmer's Market starts, nine thirty to twelve thirty on Saturdays.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Council comments? Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none, Your Honor.
Mr. Rur?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Rur?
Your Honor.
Got a thing.
Thank you.
I just want to remind you that on Thursday is National Vietnam Veterans Day, so be sure to thank your Vietnam vets. And with that, I look for a motion to adjourn. We adjourned at nine o'clock. Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.